I'd like to call the May 17, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Ms. Scott, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Cleese?
Here.
Ms. Macbeth?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the April 19 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes or changes?
I move we approve the minutes as written.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Cleese?
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Okay, there are no consented agenda items this month, so we move to our first public hearing, PCR 17-010, request of Pavilion Development Company for a special use permit to construct a Firestone Service Center at 1900 Richmond Road.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Macbeth and members of the Planning Commission. Firestone Service Center is applying for a special use permit at 1900 Richmond Road to construct and operate an automotive service center. Firestone is a national chain of automobile repair stores involved in the minor repair of automobiles. They perform minor routine maintenance, including oil changes, brakes, alignments, tire repair and replacement. All work is being performed within the building, and they do not perform major repairs such as transmission or engine replacements. The Site Plan Review Committee reviewed the plan at their April meeting and recommended approval. The site is located in the Corridor Protection District, and the Architectural Review Committee approved their final plans at the April 25 meeting with conditions. Those conditions have been reflected on the renderings that are in your package and shown on the screen here. This proposal meets all basic city zoning requirements and contains approximately 47% open space. There is a single driveway proposed off of Richmond Road. The site is adequately served with public utilities, and the use is consistent with the other uses along Richmond Road. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that a special use permit be approved to allow a Firestone Service Center to locate at 1900 Richmond Road with the two conditions noted in my memo. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant's attorney, Ray Suttle, and the applicant, George Shielder, here as well.
Sure, I had some questions. Maybe the slide that has the building overlaid with the current built...
Yes, perfect. So, that is the old hotel that's going to be demolished, that has the EDA grant to
be demolished, is that correct?
Correct. The, yeah, the kind of the white area that you see is the hotel, and the pool is in the middle.
And so that's currently, like, one lot?
Yes.
Is this now being subdivided into multiple lots?
Into two lots, yes, ma'am.
And then the Firestone is, like, all the way east? Is it east or something? But on that one corner?
Firestone is all the way on the north side of that, I guess northwest side of that property, yes.
So does the current applicant own the whole parcel? I mean, will they be the ones filling out the other half?
My understanding is the applicant is purchasing that particular parcel from the current owner, and I understand that the remainder will be...
Sold separately.
Sold separately, yes, ma'am.
And so, on the layout, I mean, I guess my sense is, this is in an area that, you know, has a viable hotel, and the next lot over, there's a pretty viable restaurants and all that on the adjacent lots, and this is, to me, looking identical to the Merchant's Tire Building on Second Street, which always has lots of cars and other, you know, like, half-cars, I mean, things that are being seriously under repair and are almost like a junkyard lot. What is, like, how much space is behind that building that hits against, like, the Red Lobster area? Is that an area that could become like a junkyard area or something?
There's...I wouldn't think that there's enough room. It's all the way up against the setback there, and I can't see it really well from here, but I wouldn't think that there would be enough room to locate anything out there. The applicant has indicated there wouldn't be any storage of materials or anything on the exterior of the building, so I would imagine that would include vehicles that are being worked on. My understanding from the applicant is also that they won't be doing major repairs, so there shouldn't be, like, partial vehicles sitting out there, hopefully.
Okay.
It is located, the edge of the parking lot is 93 feet from the Skipworth subdivision, and that's the edge of the parking lot. It's almost exactly in line with the edge of pavement that's there now, so it is fairly far from the existing residential uses.
So Elaine, is your concern that we'd have a second one of these on the side closer to Hampton Inn, or...
Well, I mean, I think that the concern, when I first saw the layout, I first thought the Firestone was adjacent to the Hampton Inn, and I really had concerns that, I mean, if my family was coming to Williamsburg and woke up to find that their room was facing the functional equivalent of what we see on Second Street Merchant's Tire, I would be really, I would be unhappy. And, you know, this is our, a main corridor for us, you know, tourism is a big deal, there's several, you know, there's a lot of hotels and restaurants there, that I'm concerned about just the layout, the setbacks, and just what the sightlines are of this, because it's fairly, the, there's like eight or 10 garage doors or something like that for use, and, I mean, so that was really my concern.
Brings me to a question. That South Side, you've got eight bay doors there. Is that shop air-conditioned, or is that shop not air-conditioned where those bay doors would be open all the time when they're working?
I'm not sure. That's a question that the applicant would probably be better suited to answer. If they...sure.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm George Shield of Pavilion Development. I will tell you my history in Williamsburg. My family's been here since Jamestown. I'm the first generation not to live on the peninsula of Virginia. My dad said, "Why would you move to North Carolina, son?" So we want this to be very, very nice, and I hear Commissioner Macbeth's comments about the exterior, and I will tell you that we have made every possible enhancement to the property in terms of design, architecture. The doors are solid doors. I don't, I can't tell you if there's a company policy about having those doors open or closed during the day. I know in some locations they're open, others, others they're not. There is one by my home in South Charlotte in the Arboretum, which is a very high-dollar mixed-use development, and most of the time when I go by there, the doors are open. But I also have five cars to keep on the road, so it's just part of, part of living there. I can get a specific answer to that from Firestone's operations, or if there's some accommodation we need to make, I'm sure we will consider doing that. One thing, too, I wanted to point out pursuant to Commissioner Macbeth's question, we actually built a store in Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, between Charleston's Historic District and the Isle of Palms. If you've visited that area, it was very hard to, it's very hard to develop commercial property there. Our store actually has a combined coffee shop and tire store, which we couldn't do on this site, but we used a Coaster vernacular architecture. So, I actually visited the store shortly after it opened, because we were at the beach, and I needed tires. So, I will tell you, it was a very pleasant experience. I recently bought a bunch of things for my daughter's Jeep, who she was doing volunteer work at York Park on the York River over summer of spring break from Chapel Hill, and it was not that pleasant of an experience, being I was down on Highway 60 in the Tire Kingdom store or whatever. Point is, we get it. We're stakeholders in the community here, we want it to be nice, and I can promise you it won't be something the community will be disappointed in. And I'll answer any question you have.
Sure. So, we haven't yet opened the public hearing, so there are other questions? But I'm going to open the public hearing, and you actually are my first speaker card, so if you wanted to add any comments of your own...
Oh, thank you. Well, I've probably worked my comments into answering one very brief question, but...
Wanted to give you the opportunity.
I used to be on, I was on the Planning Commission for seven years, so I took the opportunity to jump right in. I would add, would add a couple things. Obviously, the property that is there now, if you have not visited it recently, I would consider to be a blight on Williamsburg. No disrespect to the owners. They are being paid well by us, so I don't think they would feel insulted by my comments. But it is, it is a highly negative impression, and I think that, at the end, we're going to be replacing that functionally obsolete, very unattractive building with something that is attractively executed on. We made the property real narrow so we could use the full depth and have as much green space behind the property as possible to buffer the neighborhood, and the comment that Erin made was entirely correct. The way the building is situated on the western edge of the property, that is all green space. There will be no use behind that, behind that building. And as I said a minute ago, I was on the Charlotte Mecklenburg Planning Commission for six and a half years, was Vice Chair of the Zoning Committee. I've seen 1,500 cases when I was on, and we really go out of our way. We engaged with Erin before we ever, you know, even contracted the property, because we wanted to do it the right way. So, if the committee members have specifics that they want us to follow up on, great, we'll do our best to do that. Overall, I think we're going to do something here that everybody, hey, we all need tires, but it's got to look nice, and I think we've done that. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have another speaker's card for this item, Raymond Suttle.
Good afternoon. My name's Raymond Suttle, Jr. I'm an attorney with Jones, Blyton, Wolson, Kelly, and represent Pavilion Development. I first want to thank staff for their help going through this process. They've been very helpful in working that, sometimes what people think is a maze, but they made it very workable. I just wanted to point out a couple things really directed to your questions, one concerning the rezoning. The parcel is currently owned by one owner. Once Pavilion Development, the contract purchaser, goes through all their due diligence, of which this is part of, and they get ready to close, the property will be subdivided. That's number one. Number two, there was a question about the doors and what have you. All the work will be done within the interior of the building, so it's not like you're going to have a mechanic working outside, okay? Typically, and I think Mr. Shield can verify this and give you a little bit more detail, with Firestone, you typically will bring your car in in the morning, you know, you might leave it, it gets in the queue, they do the work, and you'll pick it up in the afternoon. It's not generally a two- or three-day process for most of the work, for the vast majority of work that's done at a Firestone. And as you can see, with the parking, is really out in the, in the front, there's no way that there can be any sort of storage or anything in what I would call the back or the westerly, northwesterly portion of that building. So, it's sort of a, still another buffer between that and the Red Lobster. Hope that maybe clears some of that up. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Additional questions?
I would need some clarification on the air conditioning question I asked earlier. Reason being, if you've got an air-conditioned shop, those doors will be down 85% of the time. If you don't have an air-conditioned shop, those doors will be up 50% of the time. There's air wrenches, impact wrenches, hydraulic tools, all kinds of noise coming from there. In the interest of full disclosure, I have a car dealership next door. I understand shops air-condition, we keep the doors down. Now, of course, we only have one door in, one door out. When you've got eight doors, if there's no air conditioning, and you've got eight doors up on that side, you're going to have a lot of racket coming out of there. And doesn't, I would like to clarify that point, that's a...
I think we can probably find that answer.
Other questions?
Maybe if you wanted, you know, I don't know if there's anybody else here to speak, but maybe if you need to close the public hearing and then come back for any sort of discussion, you certainly can, I guess. Leave that to the city attorney to determine that.
Okay, well, we still have a open forum. If there's no other questions right now, if it's Suttle, I guess, is there anyone else who wants to come speak? Thank you. Okay, so we can continue the public...
You've closed the public hearing, so you can pass this item on the agenda and move to the next item on the agenda if you want to wait to have the discussion until you get the answer to the question, and then come back to it when they...
Okay, that's what we want to do, I guess. Okay, so we will close the public hearing on this item, but we will postpone discussion until we get clarification. Do we have to vote on that, or can we just move forward? Cool, great. So, then we'll move on to our next public hearing, which there are some folks in the audience here who I'm sure are really grateful that that's going to happen. So I'd like to open the discussion on PCR 17-011 and 012. I assume we'll see them both together, the request of Amber Ox Kitchen and Brewery to amend the zoning ordinance to add microbrewery, micro-distillery, micro-winery, and/or micro-cedary with a capacity of not more than 15,000 barrels per year to the downtown business district. Carolyn, thanks.
Ms. Macbeth and members of Planning Commission, as you just stated, this is a two-part request. The first part is to add microbrewery, distillery, winery, and cidery to the downtown business district, be one with a special use permit. The second part is the applicant, Amber Ox Kitchen and Brewery, which is requesting a special use permit for a microbrewery to operate in a portion of the restaurant space at 525 Prince George Street in the Prince George Commons Building. On this slide, Prince George Commons is the building that is located at the intersection of Armstead Avenue and Prince George Street. This slide indicates the portion of the building that the restaurant and microbrewery proposes to locate in. The applicant proposes to construct a 5,360-square-foot restaurant with approximately 712 square feet of the space housing the microbrewery, as shown on the enclosed floor plan on these slides. And in this slide, you can see the brewery area shaded in light blue on the right-hand side, and you can see the rest of the restaurant space. And then this one shows the whole restaurant space in context with the whole building, which you have Amber Ox at the upper corner in blue with the yellow outdoor seating area, and down in the area below, you have the rest of the development. Including in your packet is the applicant's statement, and my memo outlines the comp plan and zoning information for this proposal. The Architecture Review Board at their April 11 meeting approved the removal of the windows on the patio for replacement with a roll-up door and patio door. A site plan was approved in 2011 for Prince George Commons, which contains 9,770 square feet of commercial area and seven apartments, and was completed in 2015. The applicant proposes to occupy two units, units 101 and 102 along Prince George Street, and currently, these two units are empty, and one unit, 106 on Armstead Avenue, are vacant. The corner unit is occupied by Three Sisters Boutiques, which will open in 2016. The proposed use of a microbrewery for this site is an appropriate use for this property. It will bring another downtown business, which will help to diversify the economy in the downtown area and in the city. Therefore, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend to City Council approval of the text changes detailed in proposed ordinance to add microbrewery, micro-distillery, micro-winery, and micro-cidery to the downtown business district, be one with a special use permit, and approval of a special use permit for Amber Ox Kitchen and Brewery to operate a brewery at 525 Prince George Street, as shown on the application. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and Andrew Voss with Amber Ox Kitchen is also here, if you have any questions of him.
I only had maybe one or two questions, just concerning the brewery part, which is, the one thing I noticed is that the brewery itself is up at the front of the building...
That's correct.
And I assume, like a restaurant, there are ventilation needs, and, you know, there's some kind of exhaust somewhere. Where, where does that fall? Does that, does that have to be on the front of the building, then, or is there room to get it up?
It comes through the roof. If you noticed in my memo, this is in the one-story part of the building.
I see.
And so it would come through and vent through the roof, and it would, of course, need to meet building code requirements for ventilation.
Okay, and can that, I assume this is a big thing, can that be, is there room to get it on the back plane of the roof, so it's not right out there on the street?
That's my understanding, that you'll be able to, to screen that, so that you won't see it from this front. If I remember, there's like a small parapet on the front of the building that hides the mechanical equipment on the back.
That can hide it all. Okay.
But you might be able to smell the beer.
Well, that was, yeah, yeah.
It's no bad thing.
Are there other questions, Carolyn?
Actually, I've seen microbreweries that are actually glassed in, so you can see what's going on.
Of course, yes, yes. I think that's part of their attraction.
Well, you see the big tanks and everything, but then there's big ventilation equip, well, I assume there's big ventilation equipment as well, which is not so attractive as a big copper vat for order.
But, I mean, ARB and downtown regulations would deal with the screening and all that kind of stuff.
That's correct. If something comes in on the actual plans for construction, and it's not screened from Prince George Street, then they would need to provide screening in order to meet ARB approval in our regulations.
That's helpful. I hadn't quite understood, just from the drawings, that it was in that one-story section, so that does make it a lot easier. Thank you.
I think that's part of the reason. You can see that brewery area and the patio and the kitchen areas behind it, and over on the left-hand side is the main dining room, and that's the two-story part of the building is above that.
Yep, okay, thanks.
So I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to come speak, and I see the applicants here, if you'd like to speak first?
Good afternoon, thank you so much, Commissioner. I appreciate your, your time today, and, you know, Carolyn's been a great help throughout this process. My name is Andrew. I am one of the, one of the partners on the Amber Ox Kitchen and Brewery project. Just to provide a bit of clarification on the intention, intention of the brewery placement itself, the craft beer experience, obviously, as we all know, has really thrived over the last really 15 to 20 years throughout the, throughout the United States. You know, the experience in visiting breweries, and the majority of the tasting rooms that I've been to, you know, they really wanted to bring the experience and showing the, the equipment, the stainless of the cold side, and making that a visual component for the bystanders that are walking down the, down the sidewalk, as, number one, an attraction to be able to bring guests in, but number two, it kind of creates a really kind of a cool experience for guests that are sitting at the bar, they can actually look back and see the, you know, kind of the brewery components. The, the Class 1 venting, it's a, it's a double-walled, direct-fired system, but the vent itself that runs out of the top of the brewing kettle, as well as the hot liquor tank, is 10 inches in diameter. It's a small seven-barrel brewhouse. Some of the ones you may be familiar in seeing is, as an example, at the Virginia Beer Company, they brew on a 30-barrel system, and their venting, I believe, is about an 18-inch diameter pipe that's direct vented through the ceiling. So this is a 10-inch diameter stainless chase that we would have, it would match all the stainless aesthetics-wise, and I believe, based on code, it's, it's to come no more than 24 inches out of the, out of the roof line. So, and that, that does, that is hidden by the parapet, that I believe is 18 inches at the top of the building line.
Great, thank you.
So, I'm happy to answer any other questions you have about the project.
And you're saying you're brewing, brewing just enough beer to serve in the restaurant?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So, the, I know the zoning text change calls for no more than 15,000 barrels. Our estimated production over the course of the year is 700 barrels, so, so quite small. And the intention is, we would be brewing anywhere between four to six different varieties of beer. We would subsidize the handles that we have on property with other local and regional craft brew, brewing producers, and, and the intention is for us is more the experience to deliver the guests that craft beer experience for the, the products we produce in conjunction with really great local products that are being produced within the region as well, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Does anyone else wish to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion about these items?
I think it's a perfect addition to the downtown area. I think it'll be a really great asset, and sort of what we're looking for.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I heard a longer presentation at, at EDA last week, and what the partners are looking to do here seems really exciting, and I think it'd be a great addition, and I think will be, you know, folks here in town are going to be really happy with the product that I'm seeing.
That's great, yeah, I think this is easy.
So, maybe a motion?
I move that we recommend approval to council of PCR 17-011 and PCR 17-012.
Second?
Scott, would you please call the roll? Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Cleese?
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will now return to PCR 17-010, and I see the applicant and council have returned. So there was a question about air conditioning and doors open, doors closed.
Answer to your question is, they're not air-conditioned. They have circulating fans. I'll tell you, Firestone, as you're probably aware, has stores throughout the country, including down, deeper down south than we do, so that's, that's their, their policy. But they think that the circulating fans create enough circulation and cooling that a lot of times those doors can be down.
Wouldn't want to do that today.
Coming in?
But I wouldn't want to work in an, an air-conditioned shop today. We have many days like this, I think. Valid point.
Well, there's, yes, so, so there's the workforce component, but then there's the noise component, which is, I think, you know, for our body, what David's really bringing up. So, Erin, I mean, I know that it's site plans and all that, we talk a lot about, you know, the candle power of overhead lights and not spilling into the neighborhoods, and there are obviously noise ordinances, but, I mean, how do we judge the potential of all this equipment that you have a very good handle on that I don't?
I think Mr. Julian may be better suited to speak to it. However, I'm, you know, the adjacent use is yet to be determined. There, we're not really sure what's going to happen on that adjacent property right now, and the, the noise that comes from that shop could be dampened. We could, you could request that they install additional plantings along that side of the property to absorb sound, but without knowing what eight bays' worth of garage doors and hammering and everything else that takes place in those kind of uses, I, I can't really tell you what it would sound like, unfortunately.
Oh, no, I understand that. I mean... I think one of the questions... We're sort of at a cart and horse issue here. I mean, I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking of is that if there's no air conditioning, the bay doors are going to be open many months of the year. There are, there is a neighborhood right next door, so there's...
Yes.
It's not just the hypothetical, what's built across the parcel. I mean, there's a neighborhood that's right there. Is this going to be consistently above whatever is the decibel level of what is acceptable on a daily basis? I mean, there must be some measurements for these.
I would like to add also that if the commission has a concern with that, you can make that a condition of the special use permit, that the doors are closed.
I might, I might offer some...
Go ahead.
I was going to suggest that, to Erin's point, and, and also answering Carolyn's question. First off, the adjacent property, although that's not the direct subject of the question, it's a one-acre-out parcel at a million dollars plus or minus market value. That will have a fairly high traffic, commercial use, I would expect, just based on the economics of the situation. So really, what it does sort of boil down to is kind of what's happening behind us. One of the things that, with the neighborhood that's there, one of the things that, that we feel is a great feature of the property itself, is the distance between the, the actual store and the neighborhood. We have a lot of... We have a lot of space back there. I would be very happy to increase dense buffer in the back, plant taller trees, water, you know, two rows of lilies, hollies, things that would buffer that sound. That, honestly, I think that's going to be a more workable alternative for us than putting a condition on the use of the building, because as Ray pointed out, you know, Firestone has twenty-three-hundred stores. It's very hard for me to tell them what to do in the store. So if we're looking to maybe solve this in a couple of different ways, I think landscape buffer, a water feature, you know, we've often used those to create a sound buffer. All of those are things I think we can easily do because we have the real estate to do that.
The other thing I would point out is, if there is a noise problem, you have city ordinances to address that. That's what those ordinances are for in your code.
So there's the skipwith side, and then there's the, I think the south boundary is another thing that's worth considering, because this use will have some, I think this is kind of getting back to your original point, Elaine, in an indirect way, but this use will have an effect on the likely uses of the other side of this parcel.
Right.
Right? So we can, we can leave the door open to the widest possible number of uses if there's effective screening, screening both of sound and of the view of what's going on in that parcel. So it's conceivable to me that a reasonable way to, I don't want to say solve this problem, but mitigate the problem that we've identified is to, is to ask for, and I don't, I think we saw this at site plan, I just don't remember what the landscaping plan was, to ask for additional screening, both on the west and on the south side. There's a ten-foot setback, you know, between the edge of the parking lot and the edge of the property line, where we could conceivably introduce some additional screening that would, that would help to block the view of the open bays and cut down to some degree on the sound.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, and I would be delighted to put a planting screen in there, you know, between the parking island and the adjacent lot, to the extent that the planning commission would want to see one. So if we have the root spacing there to build, you know, to put in good trees and irrigate the ground and so forth, that is certainly fine with us.
Do you think that is going to help, or is it not going to make any difference? I see some frown.
You know, in terms of noise, yeah. I'm sure additional screening is going to help. I have other concerns. Obviously, the doors being shut is a main concern, and I can, and, you know, not to dwell into their business practices, but open bays like that is just really, really old school. Nobody builds an automotive facility anymore and doesn't air-condition the shop. If you look at dealerships and you look at most other facilities, it's a closed-door situation. You drive in one way, you drive out the other way. It's a little bit of a antiquated setup, so to speak, with the doors down the side that way. Now, a lot of it could have to do with the size of the property and keeping the building smaller. That's certainly something to think of, but I have concerns in that, you got me five hundred yards away, just approved a tire city less than a half mile up the road. You've got a Goodyear right across the street from the Tire City. We're about to have our fourth automotive in a less than a half-mile square block right here, and arguably, this is the main corridor in and out of Williamsburg. I have concerns is, is this what we want? We want to go down this road? And that's, that's a concern as the door thing is a concern for me. I would certainly want to see something in there that keeps those doors shut, and I can't give you a scientific answer on the decibels, but having grown up in a car dealership and been there all my life, it's noisy in the back. There's no way not to be. They use pneumatic tools. Everything back there is built of steel and metal and concrete floors, and there's just nothing that doesn't make noise. So it's, and I don't know what's next door. I don't live behind it. I wouldn't want to live behind it. Just not sold on the idea of more automotive in this corridor.
Decibel, to answer your question, the decibel level for a commercial property during the daytime is sixty-five decibels measured at the property line. It's fifty-five decibels from, actually, sixty-five, twenty-four hours a day, so it's sixty-five decibels. I can't give you an example of what that would sound like.
No, no, no. Thank you, Christine.
As for the Tire City, I understand we just approved the Tire City, but that's also set back off the road a long way, not necessarily something that you even notice driving by. If you're not looking for the Tire City, you're probably not going to find the Tire City. This, on the other hand, is sitting on the road front, and I just, again, I just have concerns about going in this direction on this piece of Richmond Road.
And I appreciate that, because when I saw it, I actually was not happy to be seeing another automotive project myself. I also appreciate the comments about the doors up, doors down. I was on the Planning Commission in a previous lifetime when your dealership came forward, and doors down was a big deal, that it was, with the neighborhood, the noise was a big issue on that.
Noise and it's also looks, you know? You've got some doors open, some doors closed. It's a lot neater to have the doors closed, except for the cars. And I think the noise is a factor. Who knows what decibels are, and sometimes that's not adequate. There's noise that is, takes precedent over other noise. Jackhammers and pneumatic drills are disruptive, kind of out of place in that particular area. So I think having the doors closed is something I'd...
Well, yeah, I'm torn. I don't have a, I don't have a nice way forward to get us to consensus on this. I mean, this is not necessarily the first thing that I would have chosen for this stretch of Richmond Road, for all the reasons that Mr. Julian identifies. On the other hand, we don't necessarily get to choose what businesses to select for different parcels. We only get to say yes or no on any given application, and in this case, you know, again, while it might not have been the thing that I would have chosen, it's not, I don't quite see enough here for me, Mr. Julian's concerns notwithstanding, to, you know, to say, to say no to this. I don't know, I don't know how many automotive facilities that the town can support and that this stretch of road can support, and I think those are, those are important points, partly because one of the things that this is replacing is a hotel. We're clearly overbuilt with all of our hotels. I don't think we're in danger of being overbuilt with vehicle maintenance facilities, but I guess that is a possibility, and the idea of there being a concentration of them here is also something to take note of. I don't know what the right concentration is, honestly, and this is a relatively small kind of addition to that. So I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm inclined, I'm inclined, on balance, to approve this. I think if we can add some conditions about landscaping, I'd be willing to think about a condition that we keep the doors shut, but there's a piece of me that feels like that's a little unreasonable, and the people that are going to suffer ultimately are the people that are working in the place. So I, but I think landscaping is a very reasonable, additional landscaping is a very reasonable restriction for us to put on this application if we were to vote to approve it.
I think they also provided slightly different service than Tire City. They only do tires. You do minor repairs as well, and that also services the residents of Williamsburg as well, as well as our visitors, who have trouble. And having something visible and recognizable as Firestone and reputable may be an asset. And like you say, it's replacing motels that are beginning to underused. So there are those factors.
So how do we get to a motion on this? Who's ready to take a whack? Mr. Edwards, you haven't made a motion in a while. Why don't you?
I just made one. I think we're, it's a question whether screening is going to be adequate, or, as far as the building itself, they've been very cooperative with the Architectural Review Board. The building is, it's not a gem, but it's really a nice building.
But from the ARB perspective, part of, no doubt, the discussion about the doors, the garage doors, would be that they would be closed, and that would be part of the look of the building, and not just simply closed at eight or nine o'clock at night when they're closed for the evening until seven or eight in the morning when they start taking cars in again. And part of the initial discussion was about the doors and how they looked and all that, and so to me, it seems like that's, actually supports the idea that they should be closed.
And, you know, the drawings that we've been provided show the doors being closed.
Well, that's just a drawing convention. I don't think that's...
But, you know, that would be...
But, I mean, I guess I do see this as being more industrial in its use level, and that we have required this size, the scale of automobile operation adjacent to neighborhoods to have closed doors. So the fact that Firestone is typically not thinking about air conditioning their bays, whatever's the appropriate word there, I actually think to not have this be something that the doors are closed is actually not, you know, it's against what we have actually approved in the past, adjacent to neighborhoods.
Gentlemen, there's another Firestone store miles away on Ironbound Road. Is that not a factory-owned store? Is that a franchise? Is that a, what's the difference between that Firestone and this Firestone?
This store is a corporate store. That store, I don't know the status of it.
You are aware there's one literally within two miles away?
Uh, Firestone's aware of it.
I believe Firestone would be aware of that.
Firestone's aware of it.
Okay. There's one on Ironbound Road, the Car Wash and Firestone, right there.
That, yeah, that's a, that's a dealer.
Sound like you're winding up to a motion.
Well, since I'm chairing today, I guess I feel like I should sit on my hands and let someone else move something, but go back to the memorandum. I guess, I guess I'd be willing to support the staff recommendation with the addition of two more items from the, there are two items already listed there, three, that the doors remain closed except for the progress of the cars, trucks, automobile products, whatever, and that, I mean, I guess, we're hesitant, the second one is if we, if the doors need to be closed, do we also need to improve the...
Landscaping?
Landscaping.
I don't think so. I think that's an either-or thing.
Okay. Then I guess I'd add the bullet number three, item number three, that the doors need to be closed during normal operating procedures, except for the movement of vehicles. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Scott, please.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Cleese?
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you in June.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so that ends our public hearings. There are no, oh, open forum. It's open forum. If anyone would like to come forward and address the commission on any subject. Not seeing anyone. Close the open forum. There are no site plans. There's no listed new business. Is there any other items that people need to bring forward? We have our assorted information items. Currently, there are no public hearings for June, and so unless something happens on the site plans and subdivisions, we won't potentially have a meeting in June, is what I understand?
That's correct.
Okay, cool. If there's no further business, then I will close the planning commission hearing for May seventeenth.